What's going on at the local school level? Are we subject to the same movement that has occurred nationally? Well, we've had some elections and lo and behold, there were some surprises. Maybe not surprises, but an indication that there are some trends even here in the greater Western New York area. What's going on? Why is it happening? Who did it happen to? We'll find out. We're going to be talking to some local reporters who cover the issue on this week's episode of the Greater Western New York Report. And of course, as always, it's brought to you by...
Each week, our community makes history. Each week, you make history. And each week, there's only one source to turn to for the first take on history. You know what that is? Subscribe to the Sentinel right now to discover the history being made in your own backyard. Amen to Honey Falls Live Sentinel. More than just your news, it's your history. Welcome everyone to this edition of the State of Greater Western New York Report. Join us each episode as we discuss fantastic topics ranging from history to science to the strange and the wonderful, as well as the treasured spirit with which our region has infused America. We challenge you to consider all things Greater Western New York, from our region's very beginnings to how it inspires, how it empowers, and why it is so admired. Here's the host of the State of Greater Western New York Report, Chris Carosa.
Hey, hey, how'd you like that? Well, welcome everyone to today's episode of the State of Greater Western New York Report. I'm Chris Carosa, and with me today are two reporters who covered a couple of local elections. And why are we picking these particular reporters? Because we've obviously had a lot of elections. That's because in a couple of weeks, we'll be having the State of Greater Western New York Town Hall Meeting. That's right. It's for the, uh, this quarter, we're going to be doing it. It'll be live here and I'll tell you a little bit about how you can join up and participate in that and watch that as we go on. But first, let's turn to our guests here. And before we get into the issue of what's going on in the local school boards, I want them to tell me a little bit about themselves, just so that they can introduce themselves. We're going to start with Brenda Hansen. She's with the Arcade Herald. Brenda, tell us a little bit about yourself and how you ended up reporting.
Hi, Chris. Well, thank you. Um, well, a little bit about myself would be I am a, a high school teacher. I teach science and math, um, in addition to my freelancing with the Arcade Herald. And, um, when things started occurring in, uh, 2020 with COVID and I started to pay a little more attention to the way our world seemed to be, uh, so drastically changing, um, I began meeting with groups of people and just paying more attention to, uh, what was going on at our local level, both the school district and our town and county levels, and just became very interested in that and very interested in, in trying to get other people to, um, want to be involved in, uh, the decision-making processes that were going on in our, in our towns, in our schools, our county. And so that's kind of evolved into me, um, writing freelance for the Arcade Herald. And so I, I appreciate, uh, this opportunity to be here and talk about this.
Thanks, Brenda. Uh, next up, we have Adam Zaremski. He's the editor of the East Aurora Advertiser. Adam, tell us a little bit about your background, maybe how you ended up being where you are and, and why.
Yeah, I, uh, I went to college, I went to Buffalo State College for journalism and, um, kind of just from there got interested in the, the field and was able to freelance for the East Aurora Advertiser for a little while. And then at some point they were looking for a reporter. Um, I applied, got it, and I worked there, worked here for, you know, five, six years as a reporter, then at some point took over as editor. I realize it's been about 13 years this month, I think, that I've been here and it's been a good time. Covered a lot of municipal stories, a lot of town boards, school boards over the years, a lot of feature stories. Um, so yeah, that's kind of where, where I'm coming at from.
Thanks, Adam. And what's really great about our two guests is that they, they represent a spectrum of journalism. We've got, on one hand, Adam is fairly a veteran in this, and he'll, he'll be able to kind of give us an overview of how this, how what we've seen in the past, uh, school board elections, how that might relate to historically what has happened. Whereas Brenda really brings with her the enthusiasm of a, of a new journalist, somebody who just got on, who's very, very familiar with the issue and, uh, really can give us kind of the like, like leading edge thoughts and what other people are thinking, because she's actually been reporting close to the, the people on the streets, so to speak. So let's talk about the elections and the individuals within the, the two school districts that you cover, the two school districts. I can speak today. Uh, Brenda, we'll start with you. Uh, Mark, uh, Press, he is in the Pioneer School District. Tell us a little bit about his election, maybe how he decided to run, uh, how many people ran for the seat, how many seats were vowed, and maybe the outcome of the election itself.
Sure. So, um, Mark really became involved as, uh, this, it seemed that we were having problems with the school board being accessible to parents. Um, it started really with COVID and then it transitioned into not just being about COVID, but also some of the diversity, equity, inclusion, um, initiatives that are, that are happening. So Mark, the parents were meeting, uh, mostly Zoom for a good chunk of time. And then we had the opportunity to go back to in-person and we had a lot of parents coming and speaking, um, opposed to some of the, what seemed to be very heavy-handed state decisions being made for our local district. Um, and we were asking our school to listen to the parents and please do some things that the parents are asking, rather than the things that the state are asking. And it just, it seemed that we were not being heard. And then, um, when the conversation started to turn from masks and vaccines and things like that, to also include some of the, uh, policies that were being written, um, regarding gender identity in particular, uh, Mark started to attend the meetings and he was very concerned that there was a policy, um, already on the books regarding allowing somebody that, um, identifies as a, a girl who is actually a biological boy to use the restrooms and the locker rooms and things like that. Um, that's when Mark really started to become involved and the community, um, really rallied around Mark. Um, they were very much feeling that this was a person who would be able to, who would be willing to hear what they had to say, that maybe there would be more access to the board. And so we had our school board election and there was only one open seat or one seat that was, uh, uh, up for electing. And there was an incumbent who had been in there for about 16, 17 years, for quite a long time. And then there was Mark. And we had an amazing turnout. We had over 1,400 people come to vote, which is huge for this area. We had people lined out the door, um, all the way to the bus lanes for hours at a time. And Mark won overwhelmingly. So he garnered 949 votes and the incumbent got 506. Um, and the other thing that also came up in this election too, is that there's this concern that people are starting to have about how the funding, um, the way schools are funded are, that there's, that there's chains involved in that, that you have to, um, be, that the state has so much to say as you take the state money. And so we really, we pushed against the capital project to, you know, trying to tell us that the capital project was free money from the state. And we know that that of course isn't, isn't the way it works and that there's strings attached to that. So we really encouraged, um, that the capital project would be defeated. Now, we did not, it, it was passed, but we managed to get over 500 people to vote no for the capital project, which is actually a pretty big accomplishment, um, in this little school district.
That's a, that's a lot of work that was going on there in the Pioneer School District, which by the way is in Cataract County, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So let's move over to Erie County. That's where, where Adam is. And it's the Iroquois Central School District. And there the, uh, the newly elected school board members, Jim Miklich. Uh, Adam, tell us a little bit about Jim's campaign, how he got started, what maybe some of the support reaction was, and then how it ended up.
Yeah, so, um, I think it was a little quieter than what was happening in Pioneer for Iroquois this year. Last year saw a bit more activity, more interest from people for similar reasons with the pandemic restrictions. People were unhappy with that and you had candidates running for those reasons. Um, this year it seemed a little quieter. Um, there were two candidates running for one board seat. The incumbent was no longer running. Um, Jim was running against another person who ran last year and lost. Um, Jim won this year. I was just checking the results and Jim had 780 votes. The other candidate had 625. So kind of a, a big win, a good win, but not a huge win. We've seen larger. Um, I think there are more people who voted in last year's election, just because there were more candidates. Um, for the most part, it seemed a little, again, quieter than maybe some other regions in our coverage district. Uh, Iroquois had a friends group that was on Facebook and I know they were supporting Jim and they were advocating for him heavily. Um, I think you saw just kind of the normal political signs that were going up and around town. Nothing, it didn't seem horrible or I guess the way some of the other boards we've covered have been. Um, so I feel like it was, again, just a quieter race, but it was still, he was running for similar reasons and a candidate profile we had of him, he talked about wanting to give parents more control, kind of letting teachers do their own thing, not listen to Albany or Washington DC. So those were topics he was discussing, but he was also a person who was from within the community. As far as I know, he was involved in a lot of the sports, the coaching and just, he was someone who was known in the community and I think that helped out a lot too. So in that case, it was just more of, he's someone who's known, he was running for a school board, and I think that helped him, helped him get out there.
Very good. I, I'm wondering to what extent did do either of you, have either of you seen some of what's going on nationally come down? Or is this really just isolated to say the local reaction to Albany? Tell us what you think and whoever wants to go first can go first.
Yes, I guess I'll start. I guess it's, maybe it started somewhat as far as the national movement with pandemic restrictions and that is state, but it would have been seeing similar reactions in other school districts around the country. Um, but then, I think as some of these people have gotten more interested in school, what's happening in school districts, I think they've started to question what was happening. Maybe it didn't align with their viewpoints and they just decided to step up. And we've seen that over the years for a variety of topics, not just the pandemic, it's ebbs and flows as far as why people suddenly run. But I think there's a general sense that there were more people interested because the pandemic brought them out and then they started looking at the school district and had concerns. Maybe they thought things weren't going well and they wanted to make some adjustments.
Brenda, how about on your end?
Well, I think, um, people really started to understand that local control is slipping away. And that included local control right down to the homes of, uh, our families, where parents were feeling like their voice was not being heard and, um, that the schools were, and, and they really are seeing this, I mean, starting to come in and some of the, again, the diversity, equity, inclusion, um, initiatives where parents left out of some very major decision-making processes. And so I think that that, that, that is a national issue and I think that we do see it mirrored here. I think that the resistance to it is probably not as strong here. I think that there are, um, people that are just, either they agree with the progressive changes that might be coming, um, or they, um, are afraid to talk about it because the whole, the way social media especially is now, there's a, you know, there's this fear of this, this mob, whether it's real or perceived, kind of coming for you. And, um, so I think that we are, this is national in scope, that we are feeling it here. I think that when, in September, when the National School Board Association put out their memo, that, uh, to, while they sent their letter to President Biden and then the memo from the DOJ came out, uh, basically, you know, talking very negatively about parents at school board meetings with strong, passionate opinions. I think that people really, um, that were following this were very concerned and started to speak, to speak more.
Well, we'll talk more about the impact locally on this and the reaction of, of the locals residents, uh, when we come back. But before I go to the break, I just want to remind everyone, we are talking about newly elected school board members. We'll have three of them participate in the Greater Western New York Town Hall Meeting, which is on August 3rd. That's just a couple of weeks away, beginning at 7:30 at night PM. It's an hour and a half. It's structured the same way our past Town Hall Meetings where the first half hour, the guests will each give about a seven-minute explanation of what they're doing, what they're thinking. The next half hour will be a panel discussion amongst all three, and I'll, I'll moderate that. And, and if you have questions, you can enter them in the chat and share with them. And then the last half hour really is more of an open discussion, like an open Zoom meetings where everyone can talk. You could actually ask questions right now. If you're watching this live, and I realize most of our viewers don't watch this live, but some of them are, if you're watching this live and you'd like to ask a question, just put it in the chat box there and I'll read it to our guests. So with that, let's take our break and we'll come right back after this message.
Through the mists of time, nature and man have both created and buried treasures beyond the imagination. With the ages, these riches slowly dissolve into mere myths until they are forever forgotten. But there are those brave souls who tirelessly cling to the truth, ever seeking to discover the undiscovered, to reveal what has always been there, to uncover the hidden gems of a land thought forsaken but loved by millions. Fifty Hidden Gems of Greater Western New York. Discover the secrets in your own backyard. Buy your copy now at fiftyhiddengems.com.
Welcome back. And you know, I've just realized that I failed to tell you what the URL code is over here. Greaterwestnewyork.org. If you go there, you can sign up, register for the Town Hall Meeting to attend the Town Hall Meeting. So go to greaterwestnewyork.org. Immediately that form pulls up and you'll be able to register and you'll receive the free invitation to attend the Town Hall Meeting. And with that, there, there was a question that came up earlier that I, I wanted to share with you guys. Just, uh, you, you sort of talked about, I think, Adam, you sort of talked about Jim's background, uh, being a member involved in the community. The question is, how long was it from each of these candidates deciding that they were going to run to the election? So how much in advance of the election did they have before they decided that they were actually going to run? So Jim, why don't you start off with this one, then we'll go to Brenda?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly how long he had on that. I mean, we, the, I think the deadline was April for board candidates to submit and we had heard about it around then, um, because a lot of candidates will pick up documents that they're interested, but then they never actually file the paperwork. Um, so it would have been some point early April and then you had the school board elections around May 17th or something like that. So I think, I think that's about how long between.
Brenda, how about, how about, uh, Mark? How long did it, was he involved in actively campaigning, say?
Sure. So Mark found out probably, it was late February, early March or so, it came to his attention that, um, parents had actually been closed out of going in person to the school board meetings in September. So we'd been going in person, going in person, and then in September, they went suddenly to Zoom virtual all over again. And, um, it became very, very difficult for us to have, uh, interaction with our school board. So when Mark found that out, that's when he started to really get involved. He went back and he watched all of the videos, Zoom videos that were available. And, um, and so he started, I think, seriously thinking about it, probably at the beginning of March, end of February, beginning of March. Um, and then he started to become more and more involved with each passing week. For him, I think the final straw was when he realized that there were policies on the books regarding the gender, um, the access to the bathrooms that, that we didn't know about. And what he really said, and he's so right about this, is that we dropped the ball, you know, we, the parents, we, the community, you know, this stuff was passed a number of years ago and where were we? We hadn't been showing up, we hadn't been coming to the meetings. And so the time had come for us to realize that we needed to, to get back involved in it.
Okay. So how does this compare, say, to normal years or normal years, past years? Uh, I'll throw this out to, uh, to Adam. You know, is it typical that school board candidates don't really surface until a month or so before the election starts?
Not always here. Uh, we've seen it earlier. We've seen when we know a candidate's, maybe an incumbent's not running again. I think that's a key time. And often, if it's a quiet year, it's just that not much might be perceived as happening, where I think in past it is, if they're interested, there's something going on. And so people might start getting involved, names might be dropped, and that might be when it starts to get considered.
I know in, in our coverage area, we cover three or four school districts and oftentimes the, there's like a, they're reaching out to the community to try to find people to run for the school board. Not all the time, but, uh, you know, every once in a while that happens. So they're not always exciting, maybe as they were this year. Brenda, you know, you're new to writing, you know, you're new to reporting and I'm kind of wondering, how have you interacted with the readers of your paper? Now, I'm, I'm asking this from a point of view, you being just a reporter. So how are people contacting you? How are, how are you, you know, registering with the people? Tell us a little bit about that experience.
Sure. Well, I'm a, I'm a local girl. I've been here, well, my husband and I have been here for over 30 years now. And so, um, this is my home, this is my community. I've worked here, I, I raised my daughter here. And so I know people and I have been somebody that for many years I've been submitting, um, editorials. And so people kind of, you know, that read the paper, they know me and they know my position on things. And, um, so when I started to do the freelance, of course, that's a completely different animal. You, you're reporting just the facts, you're being objective. And I've, uh, discovered stories as I just am out there in the community and I'm interacting with people. Um, occasionally I will get somebody send me a letter or maybe contact me on Facebook with something that's going on. In general, I've kind of got my, my thing set where I, I'm very, my, my heart really is in local government and how can we communicate to people what's going on in local government at the school boards, the town and the county.
And I will say, I've talked to Brenda's editor and she's very enthusiastic about Brenda's work. Adam, you're an editor now. So you're, you're actually, I, I, I won't say you're necessarily desk-bound, but you, you have fewer opportunities to go out in the community the way Brenda does. How do you interact with your readers?
I think it's, it's similar to what Brenda was talking about as far as going out there still. Like, I'm still at meetings, I still have to go and cover school board, town board meetings. I still, I live in the community. I pretty much bike or walk to work almost every day. It's about a mile and a half so along the way. I might have people flag me down and want to talk or you just say hi. Um, going to community events, you get out there and you just try to see what's happening. Um, we have a good group of people here on staff who do follow a lot of social media and that's a big source of where our stories come from as well. So they'll, they'll get the stuff and they bring it back, we discuss it and see if we want to move forward with it. So I think those are kind of the key points, just getting out there and paying attention to what's happening in the community.
Now, if, if you're a reader of the paper, let's say, Adam, we'll go back to you on this one. What, what would you tell readers to encourage them to interact more with the newspaper? Uh, number one. And then after that, tell me, how did they interact on this specific issue as it developed?
So we're always, uh, they can reach us, social media. We have a variety of places they can go to, email, calling us. A lot of people still just stop into the office and say hello and want to chat. So that's an easy way. Um, as far as this issue, the Iroquois one was a little quieter, like I said, compared last year when it was, uh, more was going on. We had a lot of letters to the editor, a lot of people writing in, voicing their opinions on the topics and the candidates and who they wanted. We had a lot of that for another school district that we cover, East Aurora. Um, a lot of people, that was a lot more heated, you could say. And so we saw more people getting, going to the meetings and then reaching out to us afterwards to see how we're going to cover it in some fashion, asking what we're going to do. And then at the same time, sending in their own letters to the editor, um, voicing their opinion. So we encourage that a lot.
Brenda, same question to you. How did you see your readers react as the story was developing? How were they talking to you? What were they saying? And what kind of questions did they want you as a reporter to search out?
So I, um, I, the, most of the response has been very positive. I mean, it's a funny thing. We, we live in a very traditional conservative area, but we have a school that it's almost like it's a different world. And so I found that most of the responses of the community were, um, very, very much like, they, they were trying to figure out what was going on, um, that our school seems to not necessarily reflect the flavor of the community. And so we've had lots of conversations, um, regarding that. Um, again, as Adam said, social media, I have people, that's really where you get, um, a lot of interaction with, with folks. And, um, so I, I think that people just are trying to find their way through what seems to be a changing, a changing world.
You know, that's, and, and the people is really kind of what this show and what these Town Hall Meetings and what the newspapers are all about, just trying to give people something, answer their questions, or maybe suggest what questions they should ask. So let's, let's wrap up this show with maybe your, your thoughts. Uh, in, in a couple of weeks, we're going to have a Town Hall Meeting. What do you think your readers would want the three people in the Town Hall Meeting to answer? What question is, is topmost on their mind? Brenda, we'll start with you.
I think that people want to know if their voice is going to be heard again and what can we do so that we can have more say over the decisions that are made on curriculum, um, even on things, uh, you know, like these silly electric school buses that they're talking about now. Are we going to have the right to be able to make the decision on whether or not we have to do that? Or are they going to, you know, shut that down the throat of the taxpayers in this , uh, community? And so I think that that's what we want to know. Um, we understand that the, uh, that the member that's new, newly elected, he might be a lone voice on a school board. We just want to know that, that we're heard and that the money that the others, that seems to be so important is not as important as the voices of the local parents and the community members.
Excellent. Adam, same question with a twist. As, as an experienced reporter on this, seeing these things go through all the time, what do you think should be asked that readers aren't thinking of? This is a little tougher question.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I think in general, just, the readers are pretty astute here and they, they catch on a lot and we take a lot from what they, you know, they come up with ideas that we may not have thought of. So we look to them a lot and I would say, just seeing what they want. But in general, maybe just what each school candidate is, how they feel about certain issues. Brenda mentioned electric buses, maybe that's something. I think it's getting the school board, or people discussing more of their viewpoints on some things. That might help the readers to know how people stand on issues, um, for good or bad. It's just to know where, what they think, because there is an issue where school boards have been criticized for not interacting with the public. And I know a lot of the public doesn't quite, this is new for them. They're trying to interact with school boards and school boards have been acting in a certain fashion without that public input for a while. And now they've tried to navigate that as well.
You know, I'm curious, and we just have about a minute left, so I'm just going to throw this out to both of you. You, you both cover town boards or, or beyond the school board. Is there a different difference in the way people react to each board? Do they do something different when it comes to school board than when they, you know, interact with a town board? Have you seen that?
Yeah, and I think it's because of the children involved. I mean, that's the key thing where we're dealing with children, um, and their education and people feel very heated about that. With town boards, you might just be looking at, is the solar panel farm going to be good here or not? Like it's zoning issues and things like that. Where with the school district, we're looking at children. So that's, that's going to get people riled up in a variety of ways.
Excellent. Well, Adam and Brenda, thank you both for being on today's show. I want to remind everybody that if you want to participate or watch the Town Hall Meeting live, then go to greaterwesternnewyork.org. to greaterwesternnewyork.org and sign up to get the invitation. You can always watch the replay, just like with this show. It's better to be live, because then you can ask questions yourself and interact. It's actually better to be live at the Town Hall Meeting, because then you're going to be interacting not just with the guests who are there, but also with the other attendees. So greaterwesternnewyork.org is where you want to go for the Town Hall Meeting. And if you are watching this in replay, or if you're watching this in the rebroadcast every Sunday at 1:30, if on our Facebook page or YouTube channel, and you want to be a member of the live audience for this show, then go to stateof.greaderwesternnewyork.com. Same thing, there'll be a form there, you sign up, it's free, you get the invitation. We're here every Thursday at noon, live. So thank you all for being a part of today's show, Brenda, Adam. Thank you all for watching, the people who are out there live, and thank you all in the future, the people who are watching the replay. Again, we'll be here next week with more on this story as a lead up to the Town Hall Meeting. So that's it for today. Bye bye for now.